Good evening, San Bernardino. So glad that you guys could join me tonight. We're doing a special city council meeting agenda review. We have meeting coming up tomorrow. Tuesday, September twelfth. My goodness, it is already September twelfth. So I just wanted to go over briefly. I know people have been kind of asking questions. What is this? And there are a couple other items. So let's make sure that we are up and running for all of you. Awesome viewers and then we'll get into it. I'm probably about to. Try and not go more than thirty minutes depending on your questions. So you guys asked some really great ones. Okay, so let's see what we got here. Okay, we are up and running. So. Let's get to it. Alright, so we have. Our special meeting tomorrow, September twelfth, starting at five thirty P M. And this is going to be at the Vellham Library. I just want everybody to. Be very aware. I know sometimes special meetings can be somewhere else, but this will be at the regular location, starting at five thirty. So, let's see. Okay, they're gonna do the invocation, pledge of allegiance, and then you're going to be able to give your public comments. So there are three items on for tomorrow night and you can give. You're only your public comments for items listed on the agenda. So normally when you go to a council meeting. You can talk about whatever. This one is is gonna be like closed session. You have to be specific to what's on. Item one, two, or three. Hi, Eloisa. Hi, Scott. So on the consent calendar, this is something that. Again, consent calendar, you wouldn't pull unless you have a question. It's an agreement with Southern California Edison for Charge Ready Program. So this has been a discussion and in looking at how we're going with the. The charging stations and preparing, so. If you wanna look more into it, you can. It's on page nine, but this is just a. Should be a quick go through. I don't see them asking too many questions about it. And then they have two discussions. So they have the discussion of debt issuance options. For the city of San Bernardino, we're gonna look at that. It's a receivent file on the options for debt issuance, so. Even though they can take action, it's supposed to be a receivent file, and then we're going to look at the economic development advisory sub. Subcommittee recommendations. And then the mayor is going to appoint three council members to the subcommittee. And the, oh, I'm sorry, there's four. Okay, I read this wrong. My apologies. Then four is the strategic initiatives. This is the stuff that the council worked on during their workshops and now. We're going to kind of see what the city has put together as far as what the council wants to do. So, let's start at page sixty-two. For the issuance of. Okay, here we go. So let's give you guys some background. Background and general information on the options for issuing long-term debt in the form of municipal bonds to fund capital projects within the city. Issuing municipal municipal bonds or debt is an effective way to leverage the money that the city has to fund. Large capital improvement projects like street paving. Long-term debt also aligns the cost of the project with the life of the asset. So they run parallel to each other. For example, issuing thirty years bonds to pay for streets. That if properly maintained, have asset lives of thirty years ensures that the residents paying taxes are paying for the debt service. On the project in alignment with the life of the street. So technically, you wouldn't pay for something for thirty years that was going to deplete itself in ten. That's that's what that means. Uh, it would be cool if you paid something for thirty years and it lasted fifty, though. So other way would be different. Discussion debt issuances by cities in the state of California are governed by Prop thirteen. This is what look at, which requires that any new taxes be approved by the voters. So again, this has to be us. No one can just go off and do this. Cities that do not have excess funds for debt services must place a measure. On the ballot for approval by the voters in order to issue bonds. Cities that have the capacity to pay the debt service without additional taxes may structure debt. As what is called lease revenue financing. Using capital assets as equity in a model in which the city finances and leases the assets for the terms of the debt. And uses the funds for the project. So, you know, kind of, well, let's look at it as the most simplest way of being able to pawn your stuff for a bit to help pay. For your projects. And that's the most simplest terms. Not not actually like a hundred percent what happens. The city of San Bernardino has enough general fund revenue to cover debt services without raising taxes. We're in a good financial place right now, you guys. We really are. Currently, the city has a general fund bond rating of B B B plus. From Fitch and B B B minus from S and P. These ratings are related to the twenty twenty pension obligation bonds. So we're still paying for those. Before the city would pursue issuing debt, staff would obtain an issuer credit rating from the city. Uh, for the city from both Fitch and S and P. With the hope of gaining a rating upgrade because of the significant improvements in the city's financial position. The increased economic development interest in the city and the significant capital investments that the city has made in the last few years. The interest rate or the cost of the debt for the city will vary with the market and the ratings that the city receives from the rating agencies. So what they're saying is. They have a B minus B rating right now, and what they would like to do is. Basically, get a whole report card reestablished of what the city has done. What the plan is, what the improvements have been made, and look to see if they can't requalify for a higher rating. Uh, which would allow them more more revenue for. For what they're gonna put up, basically, like, you know, here we can, we can definitely invest higher. Now. This is. Well, let me finish like last paragraph. Because there's a three-year spending deadline for funds received from a debt issuance. Staff recognize the city's initial debt issuance. Be one that is either a smaller individual project or phase one of a larger project. For example, planning and engineering for City Hall or planning and pre-construction for park and recreation. Storm drain your streets and sidewalk projects or some combination thereof. So, what they're saying is, we have projects in mind, but what. What initially needs to happen is a a smaller timeframe to complete. Whatever needs to be done, and it can either be a project in whole with a short timeline. Or it can be a phase like they're saying, phase one, phase two, phase three. But uh, there is a three-year spending deadline. You you have to spend this money in that time. Okay, so I believe yes. So here's the, here's the options. This is a presentation they're gonna go through. So why issue debt? A million dollars pay-go each year. What can a million dollars buy a year? Short street and sidewalk segments, building and roof repairs, other small projects. Larger projects must be timed to coincide with savings. A million dollars in debt service. What can a million dollars buy? Thirty-year debt service at approximate on approximately seventeen million. A single, a single major street sidewalk project, storm drain project, park and recreation project, building project, so. I want you guys to think of it, you know, like, like a credit card. This is kind of really how how we're, what this means is. If you have a million dollars cash, here's what you can buy for that million dollars. And if you have, if you have a million dollar debt service, it's kind of like, hey, um, if you have a credit card. It with that with a higher limit. It's basically giving a higher limit to expenditures. It just depends on how we wanna maneuver our money. Do we? Do we want to only buy and pay for the things that we know we have the immediate funds for? Or are we looking for a a long-term expansion? Totally up to the council on how they, how they wanna do it. I'm giving my opinion afterwards. Alright, why is long-term debt good, a good model? Leverages money to fund large projects like streets, aligns payments with asset life. Thirty-year debt funds, uh, street funds for life for thirty years, payments aligned. Okay, we got that one. It's governed by Prop thirteen, no new taxes without voter approval. Cities with adequate revenue may lease revenue financing models or use lease revenue financing models. Cities finance buildings uh, to own and lease them back over the term of the lease bond. So let's talk about that. The city finances buildings it owns. And leases them back over the term of the bond. Now. This would be us looking and assessing everything that basically the city properties. And and putting them up and being able to recover our money. This is a kind of almost like what we're talking about with doing with City Hall. But except leasing it to another entity, they create the improvements. And then we are uh, the leasing, we pay them for our for our building back, so. Issuing debt, current city bond current rating, we went over that. The staff would pursue a higher rating. So they're gonna make, you know, the financial condition, economic development, capital improvements important. And then they're going to have the council discuss. Okay, I'm just gonna give you my opinion on this because, well, that's what I'm here for. I have nothing against. Debt bonding. My only concern. And and this is gonna come into number four. We don't have a long-term goal. We've never had long-term strategies. We turn over admin very quickly. We. We change our direction very often. And. We have not been the best with money. We are literally just coming out of a bankruptcy. And on top of that, a lot of the the ability to have the type of budget we're looking at right now. Um, is doing part to COVID and the relief funding that took a burden off of our general fund. I am a firm believer in letting things. Find their equilibrium financially. And and I look, I'm somebody that that uh. That understands going into bankruptcy and coming out on top. And and having a good rating and all that stuff, but that's also bred out of. You know, twenty years of not getting myself in the hole again, of watching everything I do. Only spending the cash available and not oh, and not out. Um, outdoing myself with, you know, all the credit cards. So that's kind of how I feel about the city. I think they need to be to look at this this session just as if they were a real person. So that's what they're gonna be talking about, and it'll be interesting to see how the council looks at it. And this is just a receive and file, hopefully. Okay. The next step, this should be fun. They, the city manager uh, with the mayor and council wants to. Oops. Um. Establish an economic development advisory ad hoc committee. And it says words one and three. So, the purpose of the Economic Development Advisory Ad Hoc Committee. Will be to examine significant projects and provide recommendations to the mayor and council on a range of matters related to the economic development and downtown area. Beginning on May eleventh, twenty twenty-three, the mayor and city council attended a two-day retreat and provided. The elected officials an opportunity to discuss a myriad of topics that priorities the city uh, with the city manager. Of great importance among them was revitalizing the downtown and placing greater focus on the city's economic development. On June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, the city held a workshop that introduced an array of transformative and strategic initiatives. Eamed at revitalizing the efforts to renew the downtown area. And restores to its former prominence as a center of community activity. And on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, staff brought these strategic initiatives before the mayor and council for their consideration and approval. As the city progresses in its revitalization effort, staff recognizes the need for and benefits of. A council and ad hoc committee focused on moving the city forward. With implementing critical initiatives, programs, and investments aimed at revitalizing the city. Here's the discussion. The purpose of the Economic Development Advisory Ad Hoc Subcommittee. Is to provide recommendations to the mayor and city council on a broad range of matters related to economic development in the downtown area. In order to function as a true ad hoc committee subcommittee and not as a standing committee subject to the Brown Act. The subcommittee must be comprised solely of less than a quorum of council members, having limited purpose and a limited duration. The proposed advisory ad hoc subcommittee will be made up of three members of the city council appointed by the mayor. In accordance with section three oh three of the city charter. With a focus on the downtown core for a period not to exceed twelve months from the effective date. The subcommittee will provide an opportunity for members to review significant projects, programs, and activities in economic development prior to the consideration. By the entire council, as stipulated in chapter two point seven six of the city's municipal code. Council subcommittees can study, research, and rate, right? Make recommendations to the mayor and city council concerning any matter referred to the committee by the city's elected officials. Any policy decisions or directions to city staff. Must be provided by the city council as a whole at a regular or special council meeting. The Economic Development Advisory Ad Hoc Committee will meet on its own schedule and report back to the mayor and city council as needed. Alright. I didn't see this one, so so let's talk about this. So uh, there was. Prior to the killing of the downtown redevelopment, a downtown redevelopment uh, ad hoc committee made up of. Theodore Sanchez, Fred Charette, and Councilwoman Calvin. This would establish a new committee. Looking at economic development i- in the downtown and uh, in mall area. I am not a, I'm gonna be very, very bluntly honest. I am going to speak that uh, the mayor does not appoint Theodore Sanchez to this ad hoc committee. As we know from public records, from public disclosures, Teddy had been meeting privately with developers. He worked tirelessly to um, try and get rid of R D I Co who had the downtown redevelopment contract. And um, he is a- absolutely not the guy. That you want anywhere near the ability to make any type of promise. It's very, it's very much a. A John Valdivia vibe when dealing with the downtown. He wants to subdivide um, P bids, which means. Just more possibility for pay-to-play uh, in in it's a, it's that's a very troublesome thing. That that this right here, I worry because although they say. That this this body has to come back to um. To the council as a whole, as we remember. Multiple times, the council uh, very much came out, council members were very clear that with the information was being withheld from them by the city. That uh, that council members were lying directly to the rest of the council, reporting different things, no notes were being taken. If the mayor is going to do this, I really hope uh, the mayor takes into full consideration what this means. Cause we can't afford any more games. The city was meeting privately with outside groups in negotiations in violation of of the terms of of the agreements, so. There's a lot to to think about. I mean, it's, this is kind of like, you know, reliving the past for. Uh, all the, all the bad stuff that, I mean, look, we're starting over, right? We went through a three-year process. In in picking a developer and now we're starting all over again with at least a five to seven-year projection before ever putting a shovel in the ground. Think about it for yourselves, whatever, whatever you believe, but uh. I hope some people speak up and volunteer. I would, I would like to. See uh. Probably si- um, maybe Sandra. Councilwoman Calvin. And Ben Renoso or Damon Alexander on this, but um, definitely not Fred or Ted. So. Okay, next. And then here's the resolution. Or I'll truly truly be honest with you. I'd love to see an ad hoc committee that had to be governed by the Brown Act. So we could go and sit in the meetings and they would actually have to follow the rules. So, something else to consider, which could, a motion could be made. That out there. Alright, so. Here we go. Strategic initiatives. So this is all bred out of, as the previous agenda item states. The goals and 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 priorities set forth by the council during all of their workshops. So. Let's go to, I think there's a presentation. Let's just, let me get through this. We'll go back, but let me see if there is a PowerPoint. I thought there was. I could be wrong. Uh, yes, let's just do the PowerPoint. We'll let them do all that talking. So mayor and council, strategic initiatives. City manager will give his opening remarks. I'm sure they're wonderful. This is the timeline, so June thirtieth, they're gonna do their recap. They're gonna give an economic forecast, position control. Growth over time and staff structure, mark position and bottom line strategic initiatives. On Friday, June thirtieth, the mayor and council held an informational workshop where no formal action was taken, so they didn't take any votes. They identified uh, the agenda topics were identified as quality of life initiatives. Development services, one-stop shop project, which actually was just on the agenda. Infrastructure master plan and city hall building, Legislative Affairs Program, Economic Development, bottom line fiscal impact. Okay, economic forecast. Inflation, CPI, and employment. Inflation is slowing down. July inflation was at three point two percent. The Fed has a goal of two percent inflation. Uh, slightly higher than June, which was two point nine, and July twenty-two inflation, eight point five. If you are a economic person, it's just right up your alley. Consumer Price Index, which is the CPI. Uh, July twenty-third, year over year, three point two, down from peak nine point one about a year ago, which is good. Employment and job and wage growth, one point six jobs for every one employed person. Hourly earnings up four point four percent year over year, may hit six percent, which means wages are still going up. Um, inflation is still always an issue, but um, not as bad as last year. Sales tax. So growth is anticipated to slow this year, this twenty-three, twenty-four statewide growth, point five percent. City of San Bernardino growth is slowing. But the sales tax is increasing, you know, in large part due to measures. Uh, main drivers, odd doubt autos. Sales are down because price of car is absolutely ridiculous, and energy prices are coming down. That's cool. Property tax. The city receives a portion of property tax in lieu of uh, V L F fees annually, seventy-three percent. Twenty-one million, three hundred and forty-nine dollars, twenty-two cents. Okay. Property tax is generally a stable revenue. Growth can be unpredictable. The number of homes and other sales. Dropped fifteen percent from calendar year twenty-one to twenty-two. Resident home sale prices increased an average of thirteen point five percent in calendar year twenty-two. Prices dropped in the first quarter calendar year of twenty twenty-three by six point six percent. So I'm telling you guys, if you wanna buy a home, get ready, get ready. Alright, economics and forecasts, bottom line. We have a good, strong labor market. Uh, inflation is slowing, continued sales tax growth, cause you keep buying stuff, and slow but steady property tax growth. Which we're not seeing the maximum number of dollars, but we'll talk about this some other time. Position control. Here we go. Currently, the city has eight hundred and twenty-six full-time employees, one hundred and nineteen vacancies. Turnover rates, ten percent, we have a seventeen percent. Vacancy rate, six point eight percent, San Bernardino fifteen percent. We're not doing too super great. We have high turn turnover and a high vacancy, which reduces service delivery, absolutely. So um, if you're looking for a job. Let's go, come to the city. This is recruitment and retention. So San Bernardino versus the industry, like we said, we're higher. Okay, the cost of turnover, it's pricey to retrain and do all this stuff and keep people, you know, out of work. That's not super fun. Uh, the consequences, reduced workforce capacity, increased workload, reduce productivity. Operations and services suffer, lack of strategic work workforce and planning. Now. All of these do happen, but I tell you what, we have some awesome stellar employees in our city. Uh, who have lived this entire scenario for going on a decade. So, I mean, our our people have grit their teeth and and gone through this uh, you know, far too long. But we're still getting our services. Okay. So eight different cities from two thousand fifteen to current. Okay, so they did an evaluation, growth over time. We can skip this. We can skip this, as much as we love position control. We'll move into. Uh, the other stuff. This is our hierarchy. Do 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 do, staff. Keep going, planning, we can look at, this is, keep going. Park and rec. Okay, market positions. They did surveys, compensation philosophy, recruitment and retention, employee leave. Benefits. Okay, over the last three years, there's been a thirty per seven percent decrease on clicks and views and forty-five percent decrease on applications received for job postings. Yeah, I can, I can see that. Our city is not always the most desirable place to work for. We know that there have been a lot of issues. Uh, and San Bernardino is perceived that employees experience low wages, no vacation leave available the first year. Lower vacation accruals, lower leave accrual caps, higher employee contributions. Higher cost of benefits, working in a city with a negative reputation, higher workloads and burnout instability. Fine. Okay. Staff recommends consideration and approval of the following turf-friendly. Mini loader with power washer for a hundred. This is, this is the stuff that they think that would help. A biohazard cleanup agreement, weed abatement and brush clearing agreement. Hazard pay at two hundred dollars a week for two crews and citywide security contract. Ongoing one point two million dollars. Wow. That's interesting. We'll have to hear what they mean by that, where they want that. Uh, quality of life, quality of life police department team, ongoing one point five million, a park ranger program. Half a million dollars, homeless services stability, two million dollars. That would start in twenty-six, twenty-seven for an additional four million dollars. I'm not sold on the park ranger program, guys, I'm gonna tell you. So, that's okay. This is a, this are one-stop shop. So everybody wanted a one-stop. Um. Place to go for all of their permitting and. Permits, I'm sorry, permitting and plans and engineering. So this is their, this, like I said, this was on the last agenda. Um, so it looks like it's moving forward at. A. Initial cost of four hundred thousand. They're doing an ombudsman salary and benefits for seventy thousand. I don't, that to me just seems like a waste. I'm gonna be honest with you. I don't know why the city needs an ombudsman. Just. Talk to the residents. This seems, that that seems like a waste. I'm just gonna be honest. By Ling will senior customer service rep, we need that. We don't think we need an ombudsman. Infrastructure, city hall engineering and space. Study, three hundred thousand dollar bridge management master plan, five hundred thousand dollars, ADA master plan phase one. So one point three million dollars to get going. Staff recommends prioritizing the following as part of the budget process. Storm drain master plan, facility and building master plan, three and a half million. So some good projects. Oh, look, we're all talking about City Hall, a one point three million dollar. I think we could probably be lower. I'm just gonna say this. Sometimes the city overestimates, and I'm not sure we're taking every viable step that we need. To um, help fund some of this for City Hall, given that it's a historical building. Okay, oh, sorry, let me keep the touch button. Here we go. Alright, this is Legislative Affairs. Federal advocacy contract for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, state advocacy contract for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Legislative and governmental affairs manager. No, look. I just, I can't, I can't support these things, and I'll tell you why. The whole position job of the mayor is. The whole position, job of the mayor is to go do these things. That's why we're paying this person fifty thousand dollars and supporting all of their travel. Why would we pay a legislative and governmental affairs manager when the position of the mayor is literally the intergovernmental affairs liaison? Like, that's what the person does. So is it that? The position's failing, or is it that we don't need a mayor to be an intergovernmental affairs person? Because we can hire somebody. What, what is that? And our council is supposed to be out there. On all of these other committees and all of these other bodies and boards uh working on behalf of the city of San Bernardino. That's why we have an elective. But I just, I, that to me is a waste of money. But okay. Economic development, invest in the playbook, nerve center operator, investment playbook, fiscal agent. Evaluate the feasibility of economic development initiatives, implementing a downtown economic impact study. Property and business improvement district formation, pedestrian uh activation at Court Street. Special event programming, revolving loan program, retaining a brokerage firm. To market city-owned properties, establishing a downtown university campus. Implementing an economic development action plan, expanding chamber and association partnerships, re- rebranding. So. The, the staff wants direction on all of this. This is, look. I'm gonna tell you, this right here is. A lot. I mean, we're talking like. A lot of this is gonna depend upon the completion of the general plan. Where is that? It's gonna, you wanted to, I told you, or what I told you about Theodore Sanchez and all of his dealings, property and business improvement district formation, that's a P bid. That, that's what he was trying to sell while getting rid of the developer for the downtown redevelopment, that's. See how it all just ties together? These are the issues that we have. Where is the? Where is the carousel mall specific plan and where is the debt? Where is our general plan? You cannot have. This. Without. Those vital components in place, cause that tells you what the zoning is. Uh that, that tells you what the designations are, that tells you what the plan is for everything that you're looking for. Beware of that. Strategic staffing, a director of economic development, three economic development managers and administrative assistant. So remember, they want, they wanna separate um economic development from community development. Here's why I don't support this and we've talked about this before. This is a lot of money. This is a half a million dollars for three people. Like, we have, we have things we have to get done and remember, we're talking about fiscal management right here. Our department has run. To where, if you need more analysts, go get some more analysts, but why are we creating more of these? I'm sorry, this is one, four, five people at half a million dol- it's crazy. No. It, it's, it's, it's over, it's too much. It's just way too much. It's overkill. Get some stuff done, get something done and then let's see if you need more staff. Let's just try that. Animal services, a deputy director of animal services, registered veterinarian technician, veterinary assistant. I do not support a deputy director of animal services. There's nothing there. What are you talking about? A direct deputy director for a hundred thousand dollars? Get out. Do we need a registered veterinarian tech? Yes. Do we need a veterinarian assistance? Yes. But we don't need any more directors. That's just, that's a lot. Yeah, oh, I agree with you, Laura. We will go bankrupt if we keep this nonsense. Because, look, hey guys, have you noticed that they are only looking at high admin positions right now? City manager's office, assistant city ma- an additional assistant city manager. In addition to what we are, no. I wanna know, here's what I wanna know, what is Barbara Whitehorn, the director of administrative services, doing? Why would we need another city manager if you have a director of administrative services at a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars a year? This is the stuff we always have to watch for, high-paying, high pension jobs. Housing and homeless staffing. A housing division manager, a principal accountant, a management analyst too. So. Again, if this is under the umbrella of community and economic development, you have a larger team base. You have, you have more people to work with. Like, I, I just, I can't, and I, look, I believe housing and homeless services is su- super important. But what are you doing? You don't even have a timeline for your current programs. Why am I going to give you, why are, why are we funding more? There's no results, we have no results. All, everybody said, well, if I had more people, if I had more staff, if I had more staff, do what you can right now. Because this money that we have. Isn't just, just for us to go and and create. High, high-level positions, like, I, I wanna see code enforcement, there better be something on code enforcement here. Park and recreation, a deputy director of parks. I love what Liddy's doing. I think the park and recreation team is doing phenomenal, but I, I just can't support. A du- director of parks, a deputy director of parks. At a hundred thousand dollars a year right now. Planning. Here we go. We want a one-stop shop, a city planner. A senior planner, associate planner, planning aide, administrative assistant. Yes, here's why I support this. Because planning has been outsourced. So put bringing planning back in-house, you have to have these positions so you can have a one-stop shop. There you go. Great idea. And you know what the cost is? A hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Only thirty thousand dollars more. Than one director for all of these people. Public works. Three engineering project managers, land development developer engineer. Yes, right? Here we go. Once again, if you're gonna have the planning, you're gonna have the permits, you're gonna have the people, you gotta have the project manager, you gotta have the land developers. All in-house. Yay. Now. Here we go. Did you see anything about increasing the salary of code enforcement officers that every single council person says? We need so desperately. But is highly competitive, so why wouldn't you look at increasing the salaries? Did you see anything about the actual maintenance and facility workers and increasing? No. If people, if they were finding a hard time bringing people here. Then we need to make it as competitive as can be with the given funds that we have instead of, and this is just my opinion. As someone who worked in the city, who's watched the finances very closely. Instead of more directors. And I love my, look, I love being a director, I'd love to make that much money, but right now in the heart of the moment. You can't even pave the streets. So why do you need more directors? Be aware, be super, super aware, okay? Uh, projection goals, seven and a half million dollars for all of this. Funding sources. Uh strategic uh reserves, three million. Capital reserves, cultural development fund balances. I'm sure they'll go over all of this one by one. And this will be the allocations, they said, three point four million in general fund, strategic revenue. One point seven million general fund, capital contingency reserves, total appropriations and five and a half, five. Hundred and seventy thousand dollars in cultural development fund and total appropriations. It's a lot. And then the city manager will give his closing remarks. And will ask if anybody has any questions. So. It's definitely uh going to be, I think it's gonna be a long meeting. But it'll be interesting. This is everything, you know. This is, look, this is what's important because we asked the council. Uh to come up with a plan, they have identified their key areas and they're gonna move forward with it now. Whether or not I agree with it or like it, that's, and and there's stuff on there that I think we absolutely like, right? One-stop shop. Um, you know, streamlined processes, some really good positions, and I agree, in coming years. With progress, with results, we can absolutely fund. Uh larger administrative. Positions, but you can't in one breath say we're understaffed, we don't have enough of the day-to-day workers. But. In the next breath, say, but we need more admin to oversee. These few workers, it doesn't work that way. It can't work that way. We watched it work that way. We watched the city go bankrupt because we had. A top-heavy city. That could not support. Itself with the lack of resources and the over expenditure of re- of restricted funds and high lawsuit costs and, I mean. Don't repeat the mistakes. This is, this is what a lot of people do when they get money again after financially struggling, is they go out, they wanna buy it all. We don't have to. We don't have to do that right now and we shouldn't do that right now. So. I hope, thank you guys for staying, I know I stayed over a little bit, but this was such a good. This is a good agenda. I like this. And you know what I love the most about it? It's, isn't it so awesome to talk about the future? And to be able to, to discuss and and throw yays or nays towards. You know, ideas that, that are coming instead of, you know, always trying to, I mean, except for that one ad hoc issue. We're, we're planning for the future. And we get to have a larger conversation about what that looks like. That is, it is about time. And and I'm very excited for this moment. Um. So, I hope you guys come. And um. I'm just checking everybody, everybody's comments. So. Yeah, we need sidewalks fixed, uh you know, we have been top-heavy and. You know, I, and I, there are council members that are totally aware of this, and this is just a starting point. This is just the point where we, we move forward from. And we have been stagnant for far too long, so, cool. Alright guys, well that's it for tonight. I hope to see you at the meeting tomorrow. I'm, I'm gonna try and make it. Uh in time to give a public comment, but if I do not, I will leave it up to you. And I hope you guys have a good night and a good rest of your week. Good night, San Bernardino.